Calling the agenda briefing to order, Mr. Crampler.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have our invocation, the caller, or just chairwoman Barbara Acock. Our invocation is Chairwoman Barbara Acock. Clegg of allegiance is Commissioner Antonio Williams. We'll have the approval of the minutes from our August 1st, 2023 meeting. And then we've got a discussion and adjustment of the agenda. We do have two adjustments. One is adding to the consent agenda. Item number 15 is a walk-on for a resolution authorizing Wayne County to file a formal application for a Golden Leaf Foundation site program grant. And it doesn't say how much that is on here.
1.5 million.
1.5 million, I see it there. And so that will be added to consent under number, as number 15. And then on number 14, we have a replacement for the great grant county match funds for North Carolina State Communications Advanced Services by LLC doing business as Lumos. That's a county fiber project. The county's match will be $25,000. And those will be paid from American Rescue Plan Act funds. That would be a replacement for number 14. And that's the only change we have to the agenda. Any questions on that?
Yeah, how are we going to word that? How are we going to word that?
Just, that's the word.
We're just replacing one piece of paper with the, uh, one resolution with the next.
Okay.
With a newer version. Has the wrong dollar amounts in the first one.
Thank you.
Uh, we move on to special presentations. Motion to approve the opioid use disorder awareness week proclamation. And that will be by Natalie Kemp. And then we'll move on to a 9:30 a.m. public hearing to receive public comments on an economic incentive grant with an estimated value of $30,000 from the county of Wayne and the city of Goldsboro to Alter Foods LLC. The board makes use to act on this item following the public hearing. Any questions on that?
This is creating more jobs.
Yes, yes, sir.
You may have.
Get up and speak on that one. Alter Foods.
I'm not familiar with Alter Foods.
Well, that's an expansion of.
I've, I've, I know Don pretty well. I mean, this, this is, that's to grow the business and this, and probably in the future, you're going to see it grow even more. He, he's doing a fantastic job.
Let's see here. The contract was in your agenda package, but it is an expansion of some of their capital outlay and their jobs being created.
If you knew anybody, if you knew anybody needs a job, he is hiring.
Right. I see a sign in front of us, it's a business here.
Yeah, I think it was a $2 million.
Right.
It on this.
And then we move on to our consent agenda, and you'll get into your late disabled veterans' exemption applications. There's quite a few of those. They're attached to your agenda. Tax Office has certified all of these, your late elderly disabled exemption applications, and your late present use value applications. I think there's just one of those. Um, and then we move on to budget amendments, and I'll turn that over to Altsir.
Before I get to that.
Your first budget amendment is for.
Scroll down.
Okay, can I do? Uh, here. Got it.
Your first budget amendment is for 911. This is a request to move funds from unrestricted dollars to restricted dollars. This is for a service and maintenance contract to correct the percentage share of what the state will pay for versus what comes out of general funds. And this is an adjustment to the original budget and the amount of $29,000. It is to our favor because it is actually more funding that will come from the state 911 funds.
That's an oddity.
Yes. We like those.
That's a first.
Your next budget amendment is.
But thank you.
Sir?
I said, that's a first, but thank you. Because they need watches, so thank you, 911 Board.
Um, your next budget amendment is for the Health Department. It is a request to adjust funding for the Minority Diabetes Prevention Program. And this was due to an error in budgeting. They budgeted for most of the revenue, but not for most of the expenditures. And this has been caught in part of the cleanup of year-end and all. So you'll see a fund balance appropriated of $14,549. That funding is there. It's just they've got to balance the expenditures with the revenue they had already anticipated.
And it's their fund balance, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I also have one question about that.
Yes, sir.
Take a look at the memo that's attached under what? It says Pitt County Health Department.
Um, that one may be.
Is that one that's a project partner with Pitt County?
Yes, sir, I think that's probably what it is. Because they, I think they had a couple like that where they partnered up with Pitt County.
I was just curious.
Yes, sir. Your next budget amendment is for literacy connections. This is a request to increase both revenues and expenditures for $20,092. Their board actually approved for them to receive increases retro to July 1st. But that is a reimbursement that we receive from the literacy connections. So even though you do see additional salaries, we also have an additional revenue coming in.
Is this a continued revenue?
Yes, sir. I mean, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
So this is basically just a pass-through?
Yes, sir. They're, they are on our, we pay them because they're, they're on our insurance plan, so that's why we have to do it this way.
Okay.
Okay, your next budget amendment is for the American Rescue Plan Fund, but this is specifically for a project that was approved in the CIP for, in the original budget ordinance for this year. Um, it is requesting an increase in the amount of $1.46 million. So this is actually two projects that were in the CIP. It was for fire paging upgrade and then for radio system upgrades. And so this was bid out according to UG guidelines, and I think it was bid out actually twice, and because we did not receive the required amount of bidders. And so after you do it twice, then you can accept whatever bidders you have. And so Radio Communications Company is who bid on this and presented all the documentation for doing this project. The project is, is over budget from what was originally budgeted. There are, I think, a couple of reasons for that. First of all, I think when they were going through and doing the RFP, it was decided that they had to replace the consoles. And that was a substantial amount of money more than what was originally thought had to be done. The other piece of that is, is really inflation and the cost of just, you know, everything going up. Um, and so we do have the ARPA monies to cover this. This is considered non-revenue loss ARPA monies. So these are the monies that are a little bit more difficult to spend because they're more restrictive. And we do have monies left that we need to spend. So from a, from a funding availability point, I, I would recommend using it for this just because it is an eligible use of those funds. Um, and so we have the RFP here. Um, Brian Taylor is here. I think we have representatives from RCC here. And so if you have any questions, they're, they're here and available, but from a funding perspective, I, you know, the, the funding is there, so. But we do require a budget amendment because it's over what was originally planned.
And we all know, in this day and time, technology changes every single day. And it's not going to get any cheaper, and it's not going to change. You're going to continue to see budget amendments like this for the future because, like I say, technology is advancing faster than we can keep up with now. And so, you know, I mean, and our 911 center is the heartbeat of Wayne County. Oh, and so, I mean, we, we have no choice but to, to provide our employees the best equipment that we can.
Brian, can you update us on the radios? Speak on it? Oh, okay.
I mean, this is pretty substantial there, 1.58 dollars.
Yes, it's, it's a hard pill, a pill for me to swallow too when I looked at it.
What was the increase, ma'am?
The increase was 1.4 million. Uh, out of that, one, if I got it figured correctly about RFP, about 1.1 million of that, a little bit more, uh, is strictly for consoles. Uh, where it was unaware when we done, originally done CIP, that. Uh, whereas underwear, when we done, originally done CIP, that, you know, when we updated the hardware, if you will, in the back, the backbone of the system, switches, cores, and that kind of thing, that'd have to upgrade the, the consoles, too. But the consoles we have won't work with the upgrade, and so we have to, have to upgrade the consoles.
So when you're saying console, are you saying the whole structure, or you just talking about the, 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 the?
The actual workstation.
Right.
The actual workstation.
The whole thing?
The console itself, yes.
Are you talking about the screen here?
Yeah, it's like a screen, a computer.
Right, a computer part, not the whole part.
Computer, if you will, but it's, it's very specific to, to the Harris Network, and, and I, I can't speak to the specifics of what's all included in that, uh, but I do have RCC here, if you have any real technical questions on that piece of it.
Well, what, guess what I'm, what I'm interested in is this, this upgrade, the next upgrade, because there's gonna be upgrades going on and on with it being computers, are we gonna have to do the same thing over again, or is this gonna accommodate the next? And the reason I say that is we're not gonna have ARP funds.
Right.
Next go around.
Oh, that's, I, that, I think that's a question that can't be answered at this point. Maybe Matthew can enlighten us on that a little bit, because it is, at, at the current, where we're at currently, where the manufacturer is currently, that would get us there. Now, that can change in five years, ten years.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is, and I'm, I'm not.
Right.
I'm not, you know, just, but getting us to the point today, but is it, I mean, is it gonna cost us another hundred thousand to get us to the, to the next step? And we're, you know, we're a million dollars better off, is what I'm asking.
Right. We're.
You're talking about down the road?
Down the road. What we're currently using today, we've been using for twel- eleven, twelve years.
Is this the paging, is this the fire paging?
This hat, well, fire paging's part of it, but what, what I'm talking about is the actual radio system itself. And I hate to use this word, because I know Mr. Doherty loves this phrase, but end of life, and it's. They are certain parts of the system that are no longer available. Uh, if there are certain parts of the system we have today, if it breaks, then we got to start searching to find that part, because you can no longer buy it, and it's no longer supported.
To my point, so the next section, what we're, what we got figured right here, one point four, as I said, one point five million dollars over. Is there a, is there a next step up that we're gonna be better off to look at that would cost us another hundred, two hundred thousand dollars, and then they take us right on through, or is this like, just, just getting it, just getting us to the next step because they don't make parts anymore?
A, a difficult question to answer, so number one, good morning, I'm Matthew Dean, General Manager with RCC. Uh, the, the real thrust behind the, the terrible words he used of end of life, not supported, uh, so much of this is, is Microsoft and operating system related, uh, so much of the system, of course, is software-based. It's networking equipment and networking software, um, and, and the hardware that runs that, and the compatibilities between operating systems of Windows Seven, Windows Eight, Windows Ten, and Eleven, and onward. Uh, and that's, that's where Brian was trying to explain some of the compati- non-compatibility issues between the dispatch consoles that are integrated as part of the radio system, uh, and, and then the sort of radio system backbone itself. And if you bring one up into current revisions and current operating softwares, then that's the, the consoles that are, have to run into that same operating system levels. Um, what Microsoft will be doing in the future, and, and how all of that will play out, and the, the chips and the processors that, uh, that will be required to run them, I, I don't think any of us can guess that, but.
So there's not anything that we can step up to, is what you're saying?
No, not today. The, the, the thrust of the RFP, uh, is to get the, the overall system and the consoles that are a part of it up to today's current revision. Um, if during the course of, of the timetable in, in our response, it's, uh, revision X, but in the intervening, uh, months from deployment, if, if something happens and it's revision Y, then that's the revision that we would come in with, wha- whatever is the most current, uh, software and, and hardware level for that.
We understand my, I mean, our concern.
Absolutely.
Because, I mean, I mean, five, ten years, whatever years it is from now, you know, we're not gonna have expendable money, I guess you should say, from the federal government.
Yes, no, I, I absolutely understand that concern, um.
And, and I'm, I am emergency service, emergency service, I may have been it for forty years, but I just, I mean, we're, we just got to be making, we just make sure we're trying to think ahead instead of just thinking today. A lot of times we think here and not looking down the road.
Short-term, something right in front of us, absolutely.
I'm not saying, just, I'm just saying, people, just government in general, you know?
I understand, I understand.
I'm not pulling, I'm not saying individual people, I'm just saying government in general. So I just want to make sure that we're doing, we're looking, we're, we're, we're doing, we got, we can get the best that we can get today, is what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That, that, that will bring it as, as for, as far forward as we can get today, and, you know, a- as your, your system now has been running for all of these years, without a significant need in this hardware, software, uh, refresh and upgrade, I, I would like to think that we would be looking at, at a similar term going forward, with all of us not knowing, you know, all the, all, all the precise points of technology changes and, and the Microsofts of the world doing what they may do.
Radio-wise, we're still good with radios that we've got, the actual radios themselves.
The radios in, in hand, in vehicle?
Yeah, portable and mobile, we're good.
Uh, yes, not, yes, this would not have any impact on those, so everything you have in the field would continue to.
No issues would force, would work.
Would work.
Been working for a year, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, now on the paging part of it, we've always, we've had a, you know, we've had that analog pagers patched, or whatever you wanna call it, through the system, is this addressed that part of it or not?
Do you, want me to speak something, or do you?
I think with the paging, uh.
I mean, it come, we, we, when we were briefed on it last Tuesday, it was, it was something about paging, upgraded pages for it.
Yeah, where, where we're at today, we use a single-site, five-hundred-watt transmitter to cover the entire county. There are a couple repeaters, if I remember correctly, throughout the county to address some holes that we had in certain areas. Uh, with that being said, uh, we can no longer purchase five-hundred-watt transmitters. Now, this transmitter's gone out two or three times. The last time was about a year and a half, two years ago, maybe.
So it's one lot and it's dropped away.
It was, it was, the people that repaired it, said it was the last time they would repair that repeater. So we're, we knew eventually, somewhere down the road, that we would have to look at fire paging and what, what to go with. Uh, so we, you know, of course, we put it in CIP to, you know, a couple of years from now, to, to really dig into it. Uh, but with the ARPA monies and that kind of thing, brought it to the forefront. So what's proposed is, is a simulcast analog paging system, or simplex. Uh, so it's basically the same, but not the same.
Utilizing the same equipment, same pagers?
Yeah, all the pagers, everything.
So we don't have to buy any, we don't have to buy new pagers?
No, no new pagers, no anything.
Dismissed that rumor.
Yeah.
So, uh.
Yeah, it won't be any new pagers, anything, everything will work just like it does.
So we'll never know, only, only, the only people I know that really the difference is the people that's running the system and the people that's installing it.
Pretty much.
Pretty much.
Uh, you know, depending, depending on the coverage just now, I, I, I will put it out there, you know, because we'll be going and putting, uh, antennas and equipment at each, each of the tower sites. You would think, okay, and we're gonna have eight places, we should have better coverage.
But you don't have as much wattage.
Right, but, but there could be some holes.
Just like the radios.
I feel, I feel confident that pager's still gonna activate, and we're still gonna get the calls, but where today my pager is clear, tomorrow it may be a little staticky.
Okay, so how do we fix that issue?
More towers.
More towers. Okay, so, are we look, have we looked at the possibility of where a tower might, would be needed? We've talked about this several times, but.
We, we've talked about this several times over the last year, year and a half, uh.
Then I go back to that ARP money again.
Right.
I mean, while we're into it.
We kinda know the general areas, but we've not, because without doing studies and that kind of thing, you can't say this is the best area.
Uh, I understand.
We know, we know where we would have some holes at right now.
But the, the system that you put in at each tower, the actual power, I say the power part of it, where your towers are located determines how much power you gotta ditch, or how much power you're, you're pushing, right, as far as on the wattage part?
So, so rather than the fi- single five-hundred-watt transmitter site here in Goldsboro, you would be, uh, distributing i- into the eight tower sites in the county, including, still here at the Goldsboro Tower. Uh, let, yes, less powerful, uh, transmitters at each of those sites, but each of those sites then is closer, if you will, uh, into the area that it, you know, its coverage serves. Uh, you do have, um, uh, SEC restrictions on the licensing for the frequency, you know, you, you can't just plot five-hundred-watt transmitters, for instance, even if they were still available, in the, each of those eight sites, uh, and, and still keep that same, same, uh, coverage restrictions, if you will, signal restrictions, uh, by SEC.
Back in the day when it started, they had issues with having too much power pushing, and it was overrunning whatever, is that an issue? But the reason I'm asking about the tower part is if we, well, we put this in today, and we figure out that we need another tower, X wherever, have we got to go back and retune every single thing else again? I'm just trying to think ahead down the road, if you think we're gonna have an issue, do we need to look at a tower site? And if so, do we need to kind of have these things, uh, situated where we can, we don't have, we don't have to do the work over again, is what I'm asking.
And, and I think that gets down into the engineering piece of it a little bit, and I'm, and I may be wrong, Randy, you holler at me if I'm, or Matt, either one. You know, the system be built for what we got today, where, where we got access today. If, in the future, it's decided to put one, two, three more sites up, whatever, then there will be adjustments, most likely, that have to be made, but that adjustment's gonna be minimal. It'll be more the timing, the timing piece of it to try to, to control overlaps and that kind of thing.
Is that part of the service contract per se, or is that?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's not gonna cost us a problem, then?
Should be any, no.
Well, we'll find, so time-wise, if we, I mean, if we approve today, which I assume we will, what, uh, time-wise, what kind of timeframe is it gonna be in service?
Can't remember what I called for in the RFP, if it was eighteen months?
Yes, I believe, I believe our.
RFP called for eighteen months to be complete, uh, from the time of signing the contract.
So.
We, we expect, we expect to be well short of that.
Yeah.
Well, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, is, is our A, ARP funds are pretty much the timeframe that we've got to spend it, they'll be gone by the time we find out that we got an issue.
What's our deadline for spending, Allison?
Uh, encumbered by twenty twenty-four, December twenty twenty-four, um, spent down by twenty twenty-six, December twenty-six.
We got time, then.
Well, but you got to encumber it by twenty twenty-four.
Right.
And if you, if you're gonna be eighteen months, we're in, we're in the.
Well, again, we, we, we don't expect, we don't have any information at this point that would tell us we're gonna have to have near that amount of time.
Well, say if it's a year.
But as, as, as we're not having to do any construction, which we all know can have, you know, longer-term impacts, uh, since we're, you know, we're not looking for the current, uh, RFP, you know, we're not looking at new towers, any new construction there, it is, it's hardware lead times, uh, at the facilities.
Yeah, what I'm getting at is, we're talking, if, if it takes a year, we're talking about August of twenty four, uh, twenty-four. Just say it takes twelve months, it is gonna take twelve months. Uh, there's no way you're gonna do a study and get, uh, bids out and get them back in by December, is what I'm getting at. So there's no way we can encumber it. If we have an issue, we're not gonna be able to spend ARP money on it if we don't look at it upfront. I mean, there's no, I mean, I know how, I know how fast government works, four months, you're not gonna get it done.
You'll be pushing it, and, uh, if it possible, maybe?
Yeah.
But, yeah, you, you, you would be pushing it, yeah.
Allison, could you define encumbered?
Yes, sir.
Signing the contract?
Yes, sir, a contract or purchase order.
Uh, okay.
Not gonna happen.
When you anticipate signing the contract?
I ain't talking about this part, I'm talking about if we have issues and had to put in a tower.
Oh, I, I agree with that. And we've, and towers have been discussed for years, and, you know, we, we upgraded our towers several years, what, ten? In, in, ten years at least, now, since then, and, uh.
Two thousand, two thousand.
And what the general public, and most first responders, Wayne County is not flat, and, and, and we still, we still got a few holes. I mean, it's, it's ninety-nine percent better than it was, but, you know, you, you, Randy, you corrected me, because you've corrected me before, but, uh, to get a system that's gonna work one-hundred percent perfect all the time is not out there. I mean, I don't care what brand radio you got, but, but we're so far advanced in what we were ten years ago. Uh, but, but at some point, uh, if technology keeps changing, if the powers go up, fine, if the powers go down, uh, a- at some point in the future, this board may not, but a board's gonna probably look at some old tower somewhere in the county, because, you know, and, and it's one of those things you've got to have. I mean, our, our nine-one-one system and, and our first responders, regardless of what the old law, fire, EMS, I mean, they're the heartbeat of the county. I mean, it's, this, it's got to be done.
Well, my only issue is, is the paging part of it, but it's going from a five-hundred-watt to whatever wattage you're talking about in the, on the other towers, you know, we got, we got holes now, but we're gonna have more holes, you know, after the fact, is what I'm worried about, you know, because if you can't get them, tell them that, can't get them paged, you can't get them respond.
Right.
So that's the only, that's, that's my main concern. I mean, the radio part, you can, you can get to a muggle versus a portable, whatever, but on the pager, I mean, they don't activate, and you don't get the paper.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we're still gonna have that five-hundred-watt transmitter as long as we can have. We're, we're not gonna go to this new system knowing that we got, I don't want to say major issues. I- if we, once it's put in, and we see that the area in Belfast is just not covered, there's no way I'm gonna move to that system until we address that issue somehow, whether it's with a repeater, or whether it's with a, you know, we're, we're gonna address that issue to make sure that we got that coverage before we go to the system. Uh, studies are studies, okay? Uh, the, the studies that they've done as far as the RFP, uh, kinda shows you some coverages and that kind of thing, but they're only as good as the paper of their own, you know, you know, uh, it shows you kind of what to expect, but, and, you know, we learned a long time ago, what you see on paper and what you see in the field's two different things a lot of times. So sometimes it's better, sometimes it's, might be just a little bit less than what we expected.
Click the mic, it's airport, it, it, messy little thing, so I mean, you know, I, I'm not talking from a first responder part, sitting up here today, I'm talking about the, about a money that we're gonna have to put in place.
Right.
To possibly fix an issue, and we've got, we've got some money that we can use it for an upgrade, so that's something that I'm just saying we might wanna kind of.
Look at.
Yeah, quicker than, sooner than later.
Sooner than later, okay. I'll get with Allison and Andrew, have some discussions on what might be available, and.
You know how long a study takes.
Yeah.
You know, you know how, how studies.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's a lot, you know, but, but this, but it's time we, what we're talking about, there's no way we're gonna get it in, in a four-month period.
Right.
After, after we get the system replaced, so.
I'll shut it up. Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I suppose my question is, uh, our current system is what, roughly ten years old?
Roughly, two thousand fourteen's when we signed the contract, if I remember correctly.
Nine, nine and a half years, okay. Almost ten years. So we're basically having a, a complete upgrade. So we're basically having a, a complete upgrade.
Wouldn't say complete.
Okay, a major upgrade.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, have you, did you have in the CIP this upgrade?
Yes, sir.
And so you had planned for this cost for an upgrade because we all recognize of end of life.
Right.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the same thing regards to the paging system, that was in the CIP?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the numbers in regards that you currently had in your CIP were substantially less than this, though.
That's correct.
How much less?
One point four, one point four million.
Now, how much did you have in your CIP?
We had.
One point one total.
One point one?
One point one.
So it went from one point one to one point four, am I correct?
It's one point four more.
One point four more than what you had in the CIP? Is that correct?
One point one of that is for the consoles, about three hundred thousand is just cost of, uh, manufacturer cost, software cost, that kind of thing.
I think you misunderstand my question.
Okay.
The cost is one point four, or is it one point four more than what you budgeted?
One point four more than what was budgeted?
That's pretty substantial.
That was the question I asked.
How much did you originally budget, one point one?
One point one.
So we're talking about two point five billion is what we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
Yeah.
Hey, the one point one was, uh, figured when, a year or so ago? I mean, I'm.
No, that's been, I mean, it's kind of been an ongoing thing for the last four or five years. Uh, originally, I worked with, uh, Ken Brody, uh, and then once Ken left, of course, Matt, we, we updated that to the best of our ability last year when we were doing CIP, about a year and a half ago. Uh, that was updated to that one point one.
So the cost of the, but, but the cost of the equipment is gonna, along with the scope of work as well, uh, has gone up that much? I mean, I understand that.
Well, the biggest thing is the consoles, didn't realize that the consoles were gonna have to be replaced. There's sixteen consoles that has to be replaced, and they ain't cheap. Here, I mean, it's a, it's, it's a Harris products proprietary to Harris, uh, and what all that encompasses as far as the software and how, what you're paying for as far as the hardware piece and the software piece.
Can you give us an estimate of what the consoles, what, or that portion of this would be?
While you're looking that up, can I? Yes. Uh, so, e- essentially between the, the time, uh, a year, year and a half ago when, when we were working with Brian to, to try to refresh some things from the CIP, to the time of the RFP, in, in that interim is, uh, where this, the, the Microsoft issues really hit, um, where Microsoft eight, which is what the current consoles at the main, the backup centers are, are running as their operating system, and the hardware there does not allow anything beyond Mark, uh, pardon me, Windows eight, but the system backbone that the consoles ride on would, would eclipse that. So it, it, while, while, while Brian and, and county staff, you know, and, and we, with, with all good measure, in trying to develop for the CIP, the circumstances beyond even Harris's control, if you will, because of the, the computer operating systems and the software levels in that eighteen months or so, hit everybody.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get what the figure is for the cost of the consoles.
Do, at the main backups, at the main nine-one-one center, it'd be five hundred seventy-nine thousand, has some change, and backups, five hundred seventy-five thousand, has some change. That's the cost of the actual, that's the cost of the consoles.
Is a million dollars.
One point.
So most of this is for the console?
One point one, one point two, yep. One point one and a half to, to one point two million is for the consoles.
If you're talking about an increase of one point four, it's very easy just to, to let us know that basically the majority of that is replacing the consoles.
Right.
Yes.
I mean, you know, that should have been said fifteen, twenty minutes ago.
You say those three million dollars while the guy.
I'm looking at one point four million dollars in increase.
Right.
And I, I'm just now finding out that one point one of that is actually having to replace the consoles, you have to replace the consoles because the software doesn't match up.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, and, and keep in mind now, we've got two nine-one-one centers. We're required to have a backup, and, and, you know, the backup is gonna be compatible with the main one. I mean, we're, we're looking at. Now, am I understanding that the two point five is actually being paid from ARP monies?
That's correct.
Exactly, so we'd already budgeted some dollars of ARP funds for this upgrade. We just found that we've got to spend more money because of the upgrade of consoles and some other increase.
That's correct.
Okay, I'm good.
Matt, what windows is this gonna be, what level?
I, I'm sorry?
What level of windows is this gonna be that we're replacing?
Uh, this will take it to Windows ten currently, under the, under the Harris system level. Again, between today and implementation, that may move to Windows eleven, or certainly a ten to eleven, uh, migration, it, just as you might know with your personal PCs, is a very different animal.
We've been in Windows ten for a good while.
But, but a very different animal than a, a migration from Windows seven or eight to ten or eleven. Where, where some of the backbone, you know, we've been concentrating, some talk about the consoles and, and the operating system there, some of the, the radio system backbone infrastructure and its sites and such is still running on Windows seven architecture.
Any more questions?
No, but one last comment. I don't wanna repeat, uh, eleven years ago.
I'm going with GVS.
Whatever it is, it better die, go well, work.
And then, what, what we're doing is not gonna affect coverage or anything to that nature. It has nothing to do with that, it's just the switches and, and.
Servers.
Servers and that kind of thing in the system, it doesn't affect coverage whatsoever.
Except, but possibly the paging part when it's going to that.
Right, the pa- the paging's a little different.
We're crossing it, Rachel, get to it.
The, the, the two, the two-way radio system coverage is, is not in play here.
Yeah.
Well, then, that, we're basically, they're not radios anymore, they're computers. I mean, we used to have radio to talk, radio to radio. Well, we, we, there's no such thing as a portable radio anymore, it's a handheld computer that looks like a radio. I mean, they're not, you know, and, and we've discussed this and had some good discussion, and, uh, but, look, we have no choice but to, but to go with this. I mean, you know, and, and a few years down the road, had, may, there's gonna be more money have to be spent, I mean, you might as well face reality, in changing times and technology, I, I mean, we have no control over this, it's got to be there.
So, so, so for clarity, in your contract, the upgrades are gonna definitely come if, if, when the system is implemented, that we're up to a Windows eleven or so.
What, whatever system revision, L3 Harris, the radio system manufacturer, whatever system level revision is the then most current.
And is that in the contract?
It, it's been part of the RFP, so it should.
It's in the RFP, and it's part of the RFP proposal, and, yeah, and we can carry that over into the contract.
But just because Microsoft comes out with, with Windows eleven on a computer, don't mean it's gonna be on Harris's.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Just make sure that's clear.
Hope you don't have patches.
Okay, did we beat you up enough today?
It's not been bad.
Had old answers, right, Brian?
No, ma'am, I do not.
Madam Chair, let's move on.
Yeah, okay, thank you guys.
Okay, your next two budget amendments, um, you have one for the Health Department. Uh, this is to anticipate an additional eight thousand dollars from the state for management of chronic illness in pregnancy. And then your final budget amendment is from Services on Aging, and it is to appropriate additional ARPA grant funding. However, I want to make sure that you understand that this is ARPA funding that's from, through the Eastern Carolina Council on Aging, it is not coming out of the county ARPA funds. It is one-time funding, and it is not requiring a county match. The total is two hundred forty-two thousand, seven hundred twenty dollars, and will be used, as you can see, in various programs, um, in Services on Aging, including, um, transportation, a generator, fitness equipment, um, and other, I think they're also gonna provide ramps and care management for the seniors. And that's all I have for you.
All right, thank you, Allison. Uh, we move on past budget amendments, we'll, to number nine, is establish a public hearing on September the nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, at nine thirty AM, to receive public comments on a request to rezone a three-point-four-six acre tract from RA twenty to Light Industry. Property is located on US one seventeen, alternate Dudley, identified as tax parcel two-five-eight-five-six-seven-three-zero-two-nine. I think it's Barry Hughes, he can have to speak on that.
All right, good morning, I'll, I'll be quick with this. Uh, this is a rezoning request, at this point, we're just asking that you hold a public hearing next month, um, so we can advertise for this, but it is a rezoning from RA twenty to Light Industry. It is on one seventeen alternate, uh, it is adjacent to Young's Auto Salvage, so there is adjacent property that's already zoned industrial. Uh, I think across the street is the post office there for Dudley and also Tri-County Electric, so it is more of a commercial and industrial area. So the gentleman just wishes to expand his business, which he has to the south, to this property as well.
Can you tell me what type of business that is?
It is, uh, um, he has like, um, equipment, like equipment storage, um, warehousing, that type of thing. So he, um, the building he's wanting to build is like a warehouse, like a, what I would say, a small warehouse, something to store equipment and so forth, um, in there, so. But, um, but like I said, at this point, we just want to be able to move forward to advertise for it. We'll notify neighboring property owners to post a sign as well for the public hearing, whenever that data sell.
Is there many residents around there?
There's not.
I'm good. All right. Uh, number ten's establish a Board of Adjustment Public Hearing on September the nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, at nine thirty AM for a special use permit request by Big Brown LLC for mobile home park approval within the RA twenty zoning district on parcel two-five-four-six, seventy-four, forty-nine, sixty-one, located on Paul Hair Road in the Grantham Township.
And, um, similar to the previous, um, again, we are just asking that you hold a public hearing next month so we can advertise for this one as well, uh, but they are wanting to do a mobile home park. Since this is zoned RA twenty there in the Grantham community, uh, it does require a special use permit, which means this board would have to serve as a Board of Adjustment. Uh, we would send property owners that are adjacent a notice, uh, we would post the property as well and advertise in the paper for that to give them an opportunity to speak. Uh, there will be sixteen proposed lots with this mobile home park. It is right on Paul Hair Road, right near the intersection of Highway thirteen.
What is the, uh, RA twenty zoning district?
That is a residential, RA specifically stands for residential agricultural, and a twenty itself stands for the size lots of twenty thousand square feet.
Thousand, and they're going to what size?
They're wanting to do a mobile home park, so they're actually, uh, gonna be doing much smaller lots. I think their lot size average is gonna be around sixteen thousand.
Okay.
Uh, with that, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Barry. Uh, item number eleven is a motion to approve a memorandum of agreement between Wayne County and the North Carolina State University regarding the salaries for cooperative extension employees. This is a motion, this is an agreement that comes up every so often. Uh, the counties, of course, North Carolina State Extension is responsible for extending educational services to the state citizens related to agricultural and natural resources, family and consumer sciences, and four-H youth development. Andrew has reviewed this, and he can go over the details of how this, uh, details their salary structure.
Good morning, yeah, I've been in touch with, um, NC State regarding this upgrade. The last agreement that we had in place was from two thousand and seven, so all the cooperative extensions throughout the state, they wanna upgrade it. Usually what they do is a one-year renewal each year, so they're making an effort to redo everything. Pretty much everything is the same, I'll start, if you look at, um, the first addendum, that has the, the split, so we provide basically the facilities, the phones, the desk, all that sort of stuff, um, and we fund the office operations. Um, in exchange, we split the salary with NC State, and that addendum shows the salary based off the position. Um, it varies based off the position, none of that has changed, um, that's, that's the same as it has always been. What they're asking us to do is update the agreement and then also choose what they call the lock-in or non-lock-in. I'll say we've always done the non-lock-in, and I'll explain the difference real quick. So when you have a lock-in, that means that any increase in the salary, be it the state, um, portion or the county portion, is tied to the state budget. So when state employees get a raise, that means we pay a raise on our portion, and the state pays a raise on their portion. We've chosen the non-lock-in, which means that these employees are eligible for county benefits. So if you all pass a COLA or a merit or something like that, they get that increase on the county portion. So it's a benefit to the employees. So we've always done non-lock-in, we're recommending that again, and if you do pass any increases on the county side, you only pay that increase on your portion. You don't have to pay it on the state's portion of it, so. It's pretty much business as always, but the, the agreement's been so antiquated, they wanna update it, so. Pretty straightforward.
But if the budget increases on the state portion, then they get that as well?
They get that as well, and that comes out of the state.
Sure.
We don't have to pay that, yep.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Uh, next, we'll have, uh, number, item number twelve is a motion to delegate the staff attorney as a closing agent for Hurricane Florence Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, uh, Disaster Recovery Bioproprieties. This is simply, uh, this is a program that is being run by a subcontractor for the state, and it would be, uh, Andrew, uh, serving as the county's agent to sign the documents, and we'd be looking for that approval.
There's no way Andrew can track it that long, it's already been.
Then, uh, item number thirteen is a motion to cancel the September fifth, twenty twenty-three Board of Commissioners meeting. No objection. Number fourteen is a motion to approve the great grant county match agreement with NC Communications Advanced Services. Andrew, speak on that.
Do you have that, Matt? Um, so this is, if you recall, um, what, about four months ago, five months ago, we were awarded a great grant with Infinity Link, and that was the northern part of the section of the county. Uh, we just, um, learned a couple of weeks ago that our second application with North State Communications was also approved. You might recognize them, they also, they do business as LUMUS. They're all over Goldsboro right now, those people running fiber throughout Goldsboro, so they're expanding in Goldsboro, and they're gonna use this grant to extend past this, and this is a map from the state that I thought would be helpful for you all. So this green area up here, that's Infinity Link, so they're under contract right now. We've already executed that agreement, and they should be working right now. This yellow portion down here is this most recent grant with North State Communications. So if you imagine, for example, um, Goldsboro, they're expanding at their own expense right now. They're also gonna expand, I believe it's in the memo, um, but they're also gonna expand at their own expense along, um, that area down into Grantham and Dudley, into this grant area. So imagine they're gonna start in Goldsboro, they're expanding right here, they're gonna use the grand dollars to get down here, and then they're gonna connect it at their own expense. So it's a pretty exciting project. Um, if you remember, we have to do the county match agreement, which is in front of you right now. I did update it, I had forgotten that they were only asking for twenty-five thousand dollars from the county. We're allowed to go up to seven and a half percent of the grant, but they're not, that's not what they're requesting. So they're only asking for twenty-five thousand. If you all approve that match agreement, we'll rope that into the three-party agreement that will come back in front of you. that will come back in front of you, and that agreement is between NC, DIT, the ISP, and then us. So that's what we're looking for today, is just that county match agreement. I wanted to go ahead and get that in front of you today, since we're canceling the September meeting. I didn't want the state to be waiting on us for a holdup on, on the contract, so we wanted to go ahead and do that today. And in the most recent email last week, they offered to come at one of our meetings, LUMOS did, and, and explain, you know, what their projects are for the area, so. Is that something that you all are interested in, Chip, and I can reach out and have them come, but?
Should they have an appropriate budget amendment?
It's already budgeted, because it's ARP funds.
We had actually budgeted more than that.
Yeah, we've budgeted much more than that, actually, about $100,000 more in ARP funds, so that's already in the grant project ordinance.
That's some great news for the grant.
It is. It's very exciting, and, um, they've been very responsive, that company. They've, uh, I think they're very excited about Goldsboro. If you, I saw them on Herman Street the other day, running lines over by the park, and I seen them all over the place, so.
Thank you. Chip, I would definitely have someone come in and go over the project.
Can do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. The last one was the walk-on consent for number 15 was a resolution 2023-20 authorizing Wayne County to file a formal application for a Golden Leaf Foundation Site Program Grant. This is for the Goldsboro Business Campus. Craig, if you'd like to come up and speak on that.
Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners, thank you for having me today. Golden Leaf has opened back up their fall application period for the, what they call the site grant. There are three different types of applications that can be submitted. One is for a site identification, in which you use their consultants, they help you to identify a site. The second level is for due diligence. That has got to be publicly controlled land, when you do due diligence on that land that we own. And then the third level would be for site development. The site development can award up to 1.5 million dollars. Things that can be done with the 1.5, the extension of public utilities, clearing, grading of the site, stubbing an access road, and remediation of environmental conditions to enable industrial development. We can also use that for design and engineering, construction-related costs. At this point right now, what I was recommending was that we already have publicly controlled land in the Goldsboro Business Campus. As you know, phase one is wrapping up right now, but we do have phase two. So this 1.5 million could help us to develop the phase-two portion of the property.
The infrastructure part, as in?
Will not do roads. One thing it will not do is the roads. But it will extend electrical, water, sewer, it'll do grading, it can do the engineering. Thing is, we don't even have the engineering done for phase two. We have a conceptual for phase two, but we haven't done the engineering documents. So if it does nothing more than prepare our engineering documents, then it's one step ahead and one last thing that we would have to fund.
And they do not pay for roads?
They do not pay for roads.
Really? But they pay for the engineering?
They will pay for engineering.
That shows, that designs the roads?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Craig. And then going on to new business, we have a motion to accept a tax collector settlement for calendar year 2022 taxes and prior years. And number 16 is a motion to approve an order directing the tax collector to collect taxes charged in the tax records and receipts for calendar year 2023 and all prior years outstanding taxes.
It's tax time again. Time flies.
Okay. Then we'll have the county managers' report, board of commissioners' committee reports, closed session, then we'll recess for 11 a.m. groundbreaking for the Wayne County Health and Human Services Building at 1520 Cleveland Street.
We have an update on where to.
If you guys will go in off of Sixth Street and Humphrey Street, TA 11 has actually put a pad down for everybody to park on, so you don't have to go to the 911 building. So just go in off of Sixth Street, and there'll be somebody there directing y'all on where to go.
Then we'll adjourn from the site at 1520 Cleveland Street. That's it. Madam Chair, can we take a brief reset?
You do, sure.
Thank you. Great. How you doing? Chairwoman.
All right. Can we please stand, please? Our heavenly Father, we thank you today for having this meeting and planning for the future of Wayne County. We pray for all those who are sick and our departments who need our help and guidance, and we pray for Commissioner Acock and his health and continuing improvement. Thank you, Lord, and amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes. We're looking for a motion to approve the August 1st, 2023 minutes. So move.
Motion on the floor to approve August 1 minutes.
Moving on to discussion and adjustment of the agenda, and I do have two changes. Number 14, enter the consent agenda was replaced, that resolution was replaced. Exhibit J, the Great Grant County Match Funds for North State Communications Advanced Services LLC doing business as LUMOS. That dollar amount was $25,000, uh, as part of the project. County, we use ARPA funding to, uh, extend, uh, broadband into that area. That was a replacement for that contract. And then adding the number 15 under consent was a walk-on of Resolution 2023-20 authorizing Wayne County to file a formal application for a Golden Leaf Foundation Site Program Grant in the amount of 1.5 million dollars. And those are the only changes I have, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the adjusted agenda.
All right. We have a motion on the floor to approve the adjusted agenda for August 15th.
Okay. Moving on to special presentations, we'd like to welcome Natalie Kemp here up to the podium with a motion to approve the opioid use disorder awareness week proclamation.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Kemp.
Okay, thank you for having me. And my group here held them to represent. I'd like to read the opioid use disorder awareness week proclamation. Whereas there is an effort within the county to promote awareness and change regarding the ongoing opioid crisis, and to recognize the unnecessary lives lost, the grief those who have loved ones, and the commitment of the community that cares for all those who reside within the burden of opioid use and accessibility. And whereas the opioid epidemic is a destructive force that does not differentiate between race or status, education or health, young or old, it tears families apart, darkens communities, and steals away the joy of those we love. And whereas opioid-related overdoses are now the leading cause of death in the United States, and whereas the overdose, overdose death rate in Wayne County has increased by more than 200% over the last 10 years, and whereas the estimated cost for medical and work loss in Wayne County for medication and drug fatalities exceeds more than $28 million a year, and whereas the economic future of a community depends on the overall health and wellness of its citizens, and whereas the current trend of opioid use disorder is complex and a challenging issue that must be openly addressed, and whereas providing open dialogue to increase public awareness and alter the longstanding cloud of stigma that blemishes hope for those suffering from opioid use disorder will bring value and progress to this issue, and whereas citizens within our community care deeply about the influence this epidemic has on prosperity and vitality, and whereas the Coalition for Addiction and Life Management, also known as COM, has committed to work within all layers of the community to promote understanding, enhance knowledge, and seek opportunities for change in the face of this community scourge. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissions does hereby proclaim this first week of September as opioid use disorder awareness week in Wayne County, and calls upon our county to observe this week to gain insight, to foster commitment, and to promote the call for memberance, hope, and action. And, and we would like to, um, also just make everybody aware that we are celebrating International Overdose Awareness Day in the county on August 31st at 11 down at the hub, and we would love it if you could attend as well.
Ms. Kemp, thank y'all so much for what y'all do.
Thank you.
And the 200% in the last 10 years, that, that is, that is just unbelievable.
It is, um, and I don't know if you're aware yet, we just started pushing out, we did receive a grant, and we are doing a Wayne County substance use assessment. So I work at the University of Mount Olive and have a research lab there, and we've created an assessment that we are doing for people 13 and up, and we are trying to determine what substance use is looking like in Wayne County now. And we are trying to determine what substance use is looking like in Wayne County now, because the information we have is from a couple of years ago. So we have created this assessment, we have like a link and a QR code. And our goal is we want to be able to reach at least a thousand people with this survey. So when it comes across your desk, if you guys could not only take it, but help us share, it doesn't matter if you have substance use or not, we created this survey to see like if somebody is currently, you know, engaging in substance use, what are they doing? How did they get there? What are the gaps in services? If they're not, why? Like what, why didn't they start as opposed to others? And so we're looking at kind of the whole big scope so we can kind of identify gaps in services and see what other resources we could help in the community, so.
Madam Chair. And you have the figures and the numbers for the last ten years, I mean, it's just staggering. But do you, and I know this is a loaded question, but do you think we're making progress?
In some ways, yes, but there's more and more creative ways that people are using drugs. So one of the big categories even that we have particularly, I would say maybe targeting some of the younger folk is like household items, sniffing glue, inhalants, things like that. The other big thing is taking from grandparents' parents drugs. And then also in our elderly population, particularly pain meds that, you know, they're, they're not being able to manage their pain, so they're going and taking alternative routes. It's so much easier to get access to drugs. So I think, you know, our programs, our law enforcement, they're doing a lot, but I think we also have to look at what do we need to change as the drug, as the drugs change? Like, for example, like fentanyl, you know, that wasn't a huge thing years ago. Now people are buying drugs through the internet and it's laced. And so, you know, the overdose rate, and the reason why we started to do this assessment was the overdose rate had already increased from last year. So prior to that, we saw a dip, a little decrease, and now last year it started going up again. So we're trying to determine what it is and the questions we've done in the survey. We're hoping to get some of those answers.
Well, thank y'all so much for what you're doing. It's very much needed.
Thank you.
I mean, any improvement, because it's just, it's just so sad. When you turn the news on and that's all you see, it's just, it's heartbreaking. These young, you know, a big part of them are young people, the potential that they've got to go through life and be successful, and they just don't, they just do not realize what they're doing. And we were all young in them at one time, don't get me wrong.
Yes, sir.
But the challenges today are so much greater than when I was a child.
Yes.
I mean, it's just, and it's just, it's sad, it's sad.
Especially in like middle schools. So even when we started our survey and we said thirteen above, people were like, thirteen? Well, that's actually old, you know, a lot of people are starting young, young. So it is increasing, I think, particularly in those two extremes, younger people and then older people as well. Of course, lots of people in the middle, but I just think that things are changing a lot and access is pretty easy to get.
I mean, because a lot of these kids, they're our future.
Yes.
I mean, and they're just destroying, they're destroying their future. I mean, it's just, it's heartbreaking.
Yeah, and that's why we're doing this event on the thirty-first. Also, we have people that are coming in that are in recovery to talk about, like, this is what it did to my life. And so that's why the work is so important, because it is for those next generations. Like, how are we going to improve services, improve the resources we can provide for our generations to come? Because we don't want it to keep increasing, particularly in our county.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the opioid use disorder awareness week proclamation. And thank you, Ms. Natalie.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor to approve opioid use disorder awareness week. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kemp.
And pass seven zero.
Thank you for passing that. Moving on now to, well, we're not quite at our nine thirty, we'll be looking for approval of our consent agenda at this point in time.
Appellate committee.
Yeah.
Appellate committee.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Forgot me again, Chair.
Sorry.
We all see? Okay. Madam Chair, I have several appointments to bring to the board, and these will continue in a follow-up motion. We motion to reappoint Dorothy Owens to the Nurse and Home Community Advisory Committee.
We have a motion on the floor to appoint Ms. Owens for the Home Community Advisory Committee.
Okay.
Thank you, just, we never know early in the morning what's going to be.
Okay. Okay. Madam Chair, motion to reappoint Diana Smith, Geraldine Scherer, Fran Casey, and Linda Harper to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee.
Motion, Chair.
Madam Chair, that's all the appointments.
Thank Commissioner Williams.
All righty, appreciate that. Moving on, I'd be looking for approval of our consent agenda, having gone over at our briefing at eight AM.
They move.
A motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda.
Now, under, let me get the votes in. Thank you for that. Moving on to new business, we're looking for a motion to accept the tax collector settlement for the calendar year twenty twenty-two taxes and prior years. That's item number fifteen on your agenda. Under new business.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are y'all?
Do you need to see the presentation or just let them see?
Just, either way, whatever you need to do.
They can see it online.
Okay. I brought me a copy. I'm old school. I'm old and school too. Good morning, everybody, how are y'all doing?
Good morning.
I think Mr. Doughty mentioned a while ago, this is, comes really fast. Seems like these taxes come really fast. So our first part of this would be to approve the settlement for this past fiscal year. And as you have in the screen before you, first slide is just some general information about why we have to do this. It's statutory, we have to do this every year that we have to present this to you. And the settlement must be accepted before the tax collector may be charged for the next upcoming year levy to collect that. The settlement must provide a report of diligent efforts to collect unpaid taxes, which we will show that a little bit later in the slideshow. Next slide is some numbers for you, and we are very proud of these numbers. Highlight this, the, we, the total levy was around sixty-one point three million dollars this past year. And of that, we collected sixty point three million. Left a little bit of a million left outstanding right now, and we are at ninety-eight point four eight percent collected as of June thirtieth, which is a great number, that's the highest we've ever been. This keeps going up a little bit every year, and I'd like to give a great thanks to my staff, your staff that work in the collection office, they do a great job, they have a tough job. But they do, they do a great job, and they don't do a lot of complaining. And so we are, we're very proud of them for the job that they do, so my kudos out to them.
We think our citizens are paying the bill too, right?
Yes, definitely. Majority pay on time, that's a wonderful thing. We don't have to, we don't have to worry about those.
Could you explain rebates for us?
Rebates and releases, whenever we have a business per se, this has happened a lot in business, personal property, they file their listings on time and everything's good, we bill that. They come back and do an amended return, they either forgot something or need to take something off that they did not have. We have to rebate that original bill and then rebuild it correctly. So it comes out, but it goes back again in most cases. And the interest we collected down at the bottom is a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. And you'll notice a little disclaimer at the bottom of the page, these, these are our numbers coming straight from our system. Our outside firm will audit this, and very seldom do we have any changes, I think, is that correct, Allison? Once all this done, we, these numbers will not change unless Dana has some timing issues. That's usually the only thing that makes a difference with, it's a timing issue that she makes adjustments on that. The next slide is your prior years, prior to twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. We still are collecting those taxes as well. You'll see the outstanding levy there was two point five million, we collected eight hundred nineteen thousand, which still left outstanding balance, and we have a hundred fifty-six thousand dollars in interest collected on the outstanding bills as well. Our next slide is our motor vehicles, and I like to discuss this every year. This is, did change back in twenty thirteen, we used to pay them down at DMV. You would get your tag, then we would bill you three months later, and then you come into our office to pay that bill. That changed in twenty thirteen. Now, when you get your invitation to renew each year, it includes your registration fee and your taxes. It's a one-stop shop, you pay that at DMV, we get the tax portion of that back here to us. As you noticed, the percent collected is ninety-seven point four percent, that's a misleading number because of timing of the last June billing. The bills go out, but has, everybody's not had a chance to pay those yet. This is pretty much a hundred percent collection rate, the way it's done right now, which is a great thing. Used to, we would get maybe sixty-nine, seventy percent paid on time, and then they would go delinquent, and we'd have to chase, you know, beat the bushes, they would get blocked, they would have to come in and pay before they get the next year. It was just a redundant system, and that was changed, and that's, that was a great thing that happened for the vehicle tax collections.
Adam, please.
Yes, sir.
What does the state charge us to, for that service?
Allison, you got a breakdown of the whole, there's a list of things.
There is a long list of administrative fees, it includes, it includes overhead, it includes a per-transaction fee, there's, I think, license plate.
Mailing costs.
Yeah, mailing costs, there's debit and credit card fees. I mean, there, there is a long list of fees, however, I will say that I think that the revenue we've received from the collections and the almost hundred percent collection rate is still a big advantage to us. And, and a lot, and some of those fees are just straight costs being passed on, I think, like debit and credit card fees. But there is an overhead administrative fee. We could, we could probably get you a breakdown of those if you wanted to.
My point is, I just want the general public to know that the state don't give you anything.
No, it's not.
It don't cost us two point seven million dollars, does it?
No.
Okay, well, you said we were collecting about seventy percent and thirty percent of nine million is two point seven.
Yeah. It pays for itself, it's, it's a good investment to let them deal with that, all that upfront stuff like that.
Well, it's so much easier on the citizens, too.
It is, like I said, it's a one, that's how it was presented back in thirteen when the legislation passed. It was to make it better for us, everybody all around, especially the citizens, because one-stop shop, you write one check, you pay your bill, and everything's done with it. It's a lot easier.
Takes a lot to ride.
You're saving, you're not duplicating costs from mailings. We used to, they would mail you something, we would mail you something. So we're not doing that anymore, so it saves, it saves all around.
I think it also allows you kind of to recoup the cost of like dead tags after a while, too. Like, if they have been dead for a while, whenever they do get inspected, then it catches them up on the, on the taxes without them having to go back and do all of that. So I think there's been multiple benefits on our side anyway.
You would pay credit card fees regardless of who's doing it or they're doing it, I mean, that's.
And the procedure.
Yeah.
All right, and our last slide is what we mentioned earlier about showing due diligence as far as collecting delinquent taxes. This is our, when taxes aren't paid on time, January fifth is the deadline each year. Once they become delinquent, then we have to use enforced collections sometime to collect those taxes, and we do wage garnishments, we do bank account levies, we have to do one rent attachment, and eventually, if it, all else fails, we actually turn it over for foreclosure to our attorney Andrew, which again, I would like to give great thanks to him and Catherine, they do a great job working with the taxpayers. We don't want property, we're not in the real estate business, we don't want to foreclose on people. That's, that's the last thing we want to do. So Andrew and Catherine do a great job of working with them, trying to work things out. I would say most of these, a lot of these, are people that have been passed away without wheels and stuff. Heirs get the property, nobody wants to take responsibility for the property, and I think I could say that's a lot of what Andrew has to deal with, is stuff like that. Again, we don't want to foreclose on property to collect these taxes. And in most cases, when it gets to that point, Andrew deals with them, they set up payment plans, and they do work things out in most, most cases. But it has helped tremendously to have Andrew on board and Catherine, too, they do a great job working with the citizens on these, these back taxes.
Do you have some procedure in regards to how mu, how many years delinquent before you turn that over to foreclosure?
There's no set rule that we go by, it's a combination of years and dollar amount and history of their pay. If somebody's been delinquent and they just have a history of being late all the time, and there's just, you know, it's just this combination of things.
Generally, if somebody's delinquent one year or whatever, you don't send it to foreclosure.
Unless they, unless they have.
You try to go through wage garnishment.
Unless it's a fifty thousand dollar bill and they have a history of being late, then that way we may need to proceed with that. It just depends on the circumstances.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So that is our settlement, any questions, any more questions on that? Thank y'all for the questions you had.
Any questions, more questions?
We would need a motion to accept that, please, Madam Chair.
Have a motion on the floor to accept the tax collection settlement for calendar twenty-two.
Alan, just as, just as a Chuck, years ago, I had a, I heard two gentlemen talking, and one of them asked his neighbor, says, why are you always late paying your taxes? He said, the county's interest rate is less than the banks.
You're exactly right. You're exactly right. I just try, I've heard this several times.
That was a long time ago.
Well, what is our interest rate?
If you don't pay on time, if the bill's not paid, it's, it's a two, it's two percent when it becomes delinquent, and three quarters percent every month thereafter until it's paid in full. So it's two percent, then three quarters percent every month thereafter.
So what you just done has made the news always, look at, look at the tax collection if you don't pay yours on time this year. I hear you. All right, moving on to number sixteen, we need a motion to approve an order directing the tax collector to collect the taxes charged in the tax records and receipts for calendar year twenty twenty-three and all prior years outstanding.
So moved.
Motion on the floor.
That was a quick motion.
Please do, right? I will mention while you're, while you're doing the voting, that we are in the process of getting our bills out right now. We did a software upgrade, similar to what Allison did recently, and that always brings challenges, and we are trying to test and retest before we send that, we get everything finalized and send the bills out. So we're hoping to get that done tomorrow, and then it will go to our print vendor, and hopefully they'll hit the mail probably next week sometime, so just for the citizens. I've had several calls about whether where the bills are, and that, we're about on time, we used to send them out mid-August, so.
Who would call the tax office and say, where's my bill?
You would be surprised. And we have people that actually, when they get that bill in hand, they will be in the office to pay it.
That ain't just to bet, huh?
But I will say, statutorily. Statutorily, these bills are due September first, but you have until January fifth of next year to pay it timely, so there is no penalty for paying it between September first and January fifth. Okay, we passed?
Yeah.
Yep, you passed.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
I'll go.
Thank you. You got a job for next five years.
Got to get to work. Next one.
Five years.
Okay.
Madam Chair, they wanted a picture, we forgot to do that, so I'm going to have them stand up there, y'all, if you don't mind.
We can do that. Be glad to.
We generally charge these pictures, but today it's free.
Kind of move to the side in case, or back here in case Joel wants to read this picture as well. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Okay, we'll move on now to our nine-thirty public hearing to receive public comments on a economic incentive grant with an estimated value of thirty thousand dollars from the county of Wayne and the city of Goldsboro to Altifoods. The board can act after this public hearing. I will say this, that is Altifoods desires to install certain machinery, equipment, and expand its existing facility located in Goldsboro, Wayne County, representing a total non-depreciated investment at least of two million dollars in personal and real property in the creation of at least seventeen. and the creation of at least 17 new jobs at this facility on or before December 31st, 2025, with an incremental achievement goal starting in 2023, December 31st. The dollar amounts totals $30,000, that's $15,300 from the county and $14,700 from the city. And we will open this up for public hearing, public comments.
We have no one, so I definitely can't.
We don't have anybody signed up, so.
Can we make a comment?
Being no comment, you can close the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Can we make a comment?
Yes, sir.
This is good move. Don, Don's a good man. He, he, he's good to his employees, locally-owned business. And, you know, we, we get grants and do everything we can to bring industry in. And sometimes we can't have a tendency to overlook our own people. And I think this is great because, like I say, he's, he, he's a good man. He's good to his employees, they've got good benefits. But he's like everybody else, he's having a problem, you know, finding employees. But I'm very proud of this because this is, this is, this is helping our homegrown. Thank you.
Who's the board want to take action?
I'll make a motion.
Close the public comment.
Close. Motion closed.
Can you just close this?
Okay. All right, we can do the action now. Mr. Rickard.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept this development agreement and move forward with it.
Okay, have a motion on the floor to accept $30,000 Altifoods.
Thank you so much for that. Moving on to the county manager's report, I'll just have one reminder for everybody. We will recess here and go to our groundbreaking ceremony at the Wayne County Health and Human Services Building. That takes place at 11:00 a.m., and I think our new directions were to enter from the Humphrey Street side, which is, well, Sixth and Humphrey is, is along Humphrey. You'll see the construction trailers on that side of the property, and it'll be probably where those construction trailers are. And that's all I have.
All right. Mr. Weeks?
No comment.
Okay. Mr. Donald?
No comment.
No, why?
I'm good.
Mr. Rickard?
Just, uh, not really a comment. Me and my wife did take a little time off last week, went on vacation, had a great time. Can't move quite as fast as we used to, but we had a great time. Got a chance to see some things that I had never seen before. And got home Monday tired, but I probably shouldn't make this statement, but while I was on vacation, I did not turn this laptop on, not the first time. And, but thank y'all for caring on business in the county while I was gone because, you know, one person doesn't stop the shed. But that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I have two quick comments here. For those that didn't realize, East Point and Sands Hill Center announced their consolidation to become the second largest LME and MCO in the state. And that's pretty good, to have a budget of $1.4 billion and employ over 900 people. So I think that's good for everyone here in Wayne County. My second item is that some comments made in our last meeting concerning the City of Goldsboro highest work and their working relationship with the county and some other developers. And Mayor Hamm did an excellent job of responding to that, and I just want to read his last statement here. "Finally, in order that the City of Goldsboro and Wayne County move forward to develop a strong and diverse community and exceptional quality of life for our residents, we must work together. I sincerely hope that leadership on both sides recognize this and in the future, discuss those concerns to avoid misleading the public and enabling, and enable good working relationships." And I think that basically summed it up, and that's, hopefully, moving forward, that's what we can do here. Unfortunately, Mayor Hamm couldn't be here himself, so I just want to get that on the record. No comment.
Do we have a closed session?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Discuss matters with your attorneys to have attorney-client privilege and to discuss the location or expansion of businesses or industries in Wayne County.
Got a motion to go in closed session? Let's clear the room, please.
Mr. Garland, was that you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, do I have a motion to recess? And what?